Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we're going to have Township Supervisor Tanya Bamford speak first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tanya Bamford, as Tina mentioned, and I am the Chairwoman of the Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors. On behalf of our board and staff, I'd just like to thank our distinguished guests from the North Penn School District. We are so honored to host your evening, your meeting this evening. I'd also like to welcome everyone in attendance. For those of you who are visiting us for the first time, this is the same room where we host our board action meetings for the Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors. It's where we hold our zoning board hearings, our planning commission hearings, and our sewer authority hearings. So this is a really popular meeting room, and if you haven't had an opportunity to attend any of those meetings, I'd like to invite anybody who's interested in coming back for a future meeting, because I think this kind of engagement is really important in our community. Thank you again for joining us and for making Montgomery Township your first stop on your district ride tour. I think that's awesome. Great way to get the community engaged. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bamford. And yes, we're taking our show on the road. So we will be in several different townships throughout the year, and I believe the calendar edit is available on the board tab on our northpenn.org website. Okay. So with that, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance next.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Okay. As part of, Mrs. Stoll shared that we are taking the show on the road and taking school board meetings out into the community and a multiple of municipalities, we are celebrating some of our students at each meeting. And in Montgomery Township, one of our elementary schools, led by Mrs. Heather Mann, our elementary school principal, is Bridle Path. So I'd like to welcome Mrs. Mann, and she will introduce our distinguished guests this evening. Welcome, Mrs. Mann.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for having us here this evening. I am actually going to turn it right over to my rock star crew that I have. These are members of our mighty Mustangs team at Bridle Path. So, go Mustangs.
Good evening. My name is Emily, and I have been a Bridle Path student for seven years.
My name is Olivia, and I have been at Bridle Path for seven years as well.
And my name is Daniel, and I've been attending Bridle Path for three years.
We are all in sixth grade and are proud members of our Bridle Path Mighty Mustang Cheer Team, and we would like to share the many different reasons why we love Bridle Path.
Bridle Path will and has always helped to keep students' brains active and learning. When you walk into a classroom, you will see it decorated appropriately for each grade with students doing their work and being respectful and kind to each other. This is all of the staff's work. They teach us not just math or social studies, but teaches how to have good friendships with other people. The teachers have always kept us engaged and focused while doing work and play, and they find a way to incorporate enjoyable activities into learning. Our staff helps keep our school safe, clean, protected, and in good shape. When someone's computer isn't working, our tech crew is always there to help. When a student is crying, the school counselors are always there to comfort, and when someone is hurt, the nurses are always, will always ensure that they're okay.
Not only are the staff just there to help, but they work together to make fun and popular school events, such as the Spooktacular, which is a fun, enjoyable Halloween party. The Bridle Path Carnival has some activities and a lot of time to hang out with your friends. Frosty Fest is a winter-themed party that includes our annual chorus concert. These events help raise our school spirit. They are usually packed with tons of students and are very well-known at Bridle Path.
On top of all, this Bridle Path has an extraordinary and talented music status. Students are able to join band, orchestra, and chorus. These practices normally take place before school and are taught by the most experienced and talented music directors. The concerts are thrilling and are filled with tons of parents and friends.
We also have talented grade-level teachers at Bridle Path. Last year, our ELA teacher, Mrs. Lumbis, gave our class an assignment. We had to write about what we would say if we were asking our principal to start an after-school activity. We wrote about starting a cheer club. We really wanted to highlight what we care about here at school. When we finished, we thought it would be an amazing idea to see if this could actually happen. But first, we had to think about how having a cheer club would affect the school in a positive way. We realized that having a cheer club can help raise our school spirit, keep kids active, and give a place to be social too.
A big part of cheer is our performances. They help show how hard we work and that being a team is something we value at Bridle Path. Our performances help our students get some exercise and get them used to being seen by large groups. The performances also give the younger students in our school something to look up to as they continue to go through the grades. Another thing is our performances help with is teaching and reminding our school about our expectations generally.
P stands for positive, R stands for respectful, I stands for inclusive, D stands for dependable, and E stands for engaged.
At Bridle Path, we teach all of our students the value of our pride expectations, because we love showing off our pride to the whole school. Every morning, we say the Pride Pledge. Today, I will show my Mustang pride. I will be positive in all I do. I will be respectful towards myself and others. I will be inclusive during work and play. I will be dependable and do my best. I will be engaged and focused. I am proud to be me. I have Mustang pride. This helps start our day off on an amazing note that reminds all students how great it is to be a Bridle Path student.
Since inclusive is part of our pride expectations, the cheer team has made it their goal to do just that. Being on the cheer team has taught me so much, and I'm so grateful to be a part of it. But most of all, being on the cheer team has really shown that cheer isn't just for girls. And the Bridle Path cheer team has done an amazing job of helping to make sure everyone feels included. This is awesome, because being on a cheer team is not just joining a club, but joining a group of people who have the same interests as you. Joining cheer is a great way to stay active and social, so we strongly encourage the boys and girls to join.
To finish, we really love being a part of the Mighty Mustangs Cheer Team and showing off how much...
We love students here at Bridle Path.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was really sweet. Thank you, Mrs. Mann, for bringing them. Okay. Next up then, we will have our Audience of Citizens. So before we have anybody come up to speak, I'm going to read off the public statement, and then we will take our first speaker. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. As a reminder, the Audience of Citizens portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters which may or may come, which are or may come before the board. It is not designed for debate or discussion with the board. When appropriate, individual school board directors may choose to respond to public comments that have been made once the Audience of Citizens period has concluded, or request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting. And this is in reference to Policy 903. So if there is anyone who would like to speak this evening, now is your time to do so. No, Mr. Patchell? Anyone?
Jason Lanier Lansdale. At the conclusion of last meeting, I had a brief conversation with Board Member Stoll, and it occurred to me that she didn't realize how political this board has become. And it started, you know, you guys got elected in, I guess, 2016, 2017, it's your first full year. Casa, who's not here, ran for state rep in 2018. The biggest part about that, he amassed a huge war chest, $1.4 million. The treasure of that war chest has been stolen. And since that time, the amount of money that has been spent on that election versus how much money has been sent after that election is pretty alarming. For that election, according to Transparence USA, which tracks these sort of things, it was roughly $670,000, I believe, was spent out of the $1.4 some-odd million. And since then, there's been a number of people who've been friendly to the board, who've been elected in a number of positions throughout the greater North Penn area. I could go through the whole list, but there's a couple of people who have outside positions with Democrat organizations right here. Al Roche is part of the Democrats for North Penn. Of course, you're the treasurer, I think, for the Democrats in North Penn, as well as the Casa war chest of money. McBane, you were at one point, I don't know if you still are. You also have Kristen Fusco. You have Casa, I think he's also part of the Montgomery one. There's a couple other names. Liz, did any involvement with you guys? How much, what I wanted to know is how much money of that war chest has gone to either directly funding campaigns of people in the North Penn area that you wanted to get elected and/or to North Penn Neighbors for Progress? Because quickly I saw that there was at least $10,000 that went over to North Penn Neighbors for Progress. So if they, they supported campaigns in lieu of you directly, I'm wondering, are you using this position to somehow better your political career? Is this being, is this, this idea of, of sort of a non-political school board seems to be put aside with the idea that all of this money is being donated to campaign, to campaigns which you want to support? This doesn't even go into the, the social media, where you post pictures of yourself giving away rebate checks next to pictures of you campaigning for people.
No.
Excuse me. On October 8th, you posted a picture of handing out checks. October 9th, you posted a picture of you handing out campaign material.
You made it sound like I was doing the same together. I was not doing them together.
You look, you look fairly similar. I mean, you dress fairly similarly.
I dressed very similarly.
You dressed very similarly for both photographs.
Okay.
Whether you posted them on different days or not.
Mr. Summers, is this relevant to the school board business?
Well, that does conclude your three minutes.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Are there any other residents that would like to make public comment right now? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next thing. All right. The approval of the minutes from the September 15th, 2022 action meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up are the committee reports. First up is Personnel. The Personnel Committee of the Board met on October 4th, 2022 to discuss matters of personnel, including the employment of staff and staffing considerations. End of report. Finance. Mr. Fusco's not here tonight, so I will read the Finance Committee report. At the October 11th, 2022 Finance Committee meeting, which was an in-person meeting, the financial reports were reviewed in addition to the following items that appear on tonight's agenda. Act 57, which deals with real estate tax payments and waiver of penalties for new property owners who did not receive a real estate tax bill. Number two, the capital reserve fund transfer and the amount of $2 million based on the preliminary audit results. Three, the addition to committed fund balance and the amount of $6.3 million for the purpose of future capital projects. Also changing the current committed fund balance for Piers' obligations to future capital projects. Number four, the results of the municipal financial advisor, RFP, were reviewed with recommendation to engage the services of PFM. Number five, Mr. Skrocki announced that the district was recently awarded another propane bus initiative grant in the amount of $199,435. Total grants received for the propane bus initiative now total over $814,000. For informational items, Mr. Skrocki reviewed the tax collector audits and provided an update on the onsite healthcare center. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 9th, at 6:00 PM at the ESC. End of report. Next up is Safe Schools, which is Mr. Casa. Is there anyone from, oh, Mrs. Wesley?
Sure. Thank you, President Stoll. The new coordinator of Safe Schools and Emergency Management, Brandon Roan, presented his 30, 60, 90-day plan to the committee. Mr. Roan's plan included meetings with staff, administration, community members, and first responder leaders in the district. Mr. Nicholson and Dr. Mike McKenna provided the committee with updates on the opening of schools. Mr. Nicholson reported that all secondary schools are completing the required drills per the state mandate. Dr. McKenna reported the same for the elementary schools. There were no agenda items that were moved to the action meeting tonight. The next Safe Schools meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 26th, at 5:45 PM in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Next up is the Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee report. Dr. G, please.
The ECI Committee met on Monday, October 3rd, 2022. During that meeting, the curriculum team, led by Dr. Pamela Hart, provided curriculum updates. The information presented included the ELD program in the district and the results of a study on the effectiveness of math intervention at the middle school level. The committee also reviewed four student trips, which are on the agenda for approval this evening. On November 1st, 2022, the ECI Committee will hold its next meeting.
Thank you, Dr. G. Next up is the Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee met on October 11th, 2022. Its ongoing review of the policies for the district has progressed to the 700 series. This series contains various types of property in the district's possession and topics related to that property. At the meeting, four policies were viewed and discussed. Those policies are 703, sanitary management; 704, maintenance; 705, facilities and safe workplace safety; 716, integrated pest management. All these policies are on this evening's agenda for first read.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Next up is Facilities and Operations. Mrs. Wesley, please.
Thank you. Facilities and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, September 27th, in a virtual format. The committee reviewed the following items that were, that are being moved to tonight's action meeting for the board's consideration. Three change orders for the NAP Elementary School project, air conditioning repairs to the Educational Service Center, Services Center, and brick cleaning, ceiling, and some restoration to the NAP Elementary School. The committee was presented and discussed informational items, which included the monthly app, sorry, NAP Elementary Project update and additional work requests to the NAP Elementary School. We also discussed the 10-year capital project plan and potential projects for the summer of 2023. There was also a comprehensive review of the 2021, 2022 energy consumption within the district, the expenditures, and a forecast for consumption and expenditures for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Also, there was a presentation and discussion of community use of the Crawford Stadium track. The next Facilities and Operations meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 26th, at 7:00 PM, and it will be held in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Next up is the North Monco Technical Career Center.
The board approved the following curriculum changes. The Hornet Culture and Drafting Programs will not accept any new students and will run until the students age out of the program. This is because the programs are offered at many of the sending schools, and at the pro-tech, we have low enrollment. In each of those programs, we have like five people who want to stay in the program. The new programs that will be added for the 23, 24, 4th school year include service occupations, social media, and digital marketing technology, and building and construction and property management. We passed three policies. Those policies are 100, comprehensive planning; 237, electronic devices; and 237.1, audio and/or video recording. That's the end of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Next up is the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Mrs. Ramich, please.
Great. Thank you. So the MCIU board last met on September 28th, and we always start our meetings off with a program update, and this week, this month's program update was from the Office of Human Resource Team that presented an overview of the many services provided, as well as the challenges faced in hiring. Dr. Speaker shared information regarding upcoming safety events and conferences hosted by the Pennsylvania Department of Homeland Security. Dr. Speaker invited all MCIU board meetings to attend an official building dedication for the Early Learning Academy located in Norristown, and that event will be held tomorrow. In addition, we received updates about a planning team that has been formed and will be meeting on a regular basis to begin planning the layout and the space utilization for a new building located in Lansdale that will, that's approximately 52,000 square feet, and will, over three floors, and will host early intervention programs. So, early intervention, pre-K counts, and Head Start, really excited that these services and this, the benefits are coming to our district. So this program will serve future North Penn students, as well as those from Souderton and Wissahickin. Really grateful that this space has been found and this service will be provided. We, the board received human resource updates, grant approvals, and other business. The next meeting of the MCIU board will be held on November 17th. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. And then we'll just stay with you for the North Penn Ed Foundation report, please.
Great. October is a busy time for the foundation. During this month, we hold our annual Unite to Inspire Staff Giving Program. North Penn staff members who donate can win awesome prizes, including a Yeti cooler and Eagles tickets. And everyone who donates receives, receives a small gift from the foundation. On October 11th, we held our 21st Annual Golf Outing, and I'm thrilled to report that we received, we, we raised over $30,000. It was a beautiful day at the Tallamore Country Club. I would, I would like to thank our sponsors, players, and volunteers who made it a great day. We are currently accepting mid-year grant applications and approve $25,000 for funding for those grants. So look forward to updates for those programs coming. To learn more things about the foundation, please visit npennfoundation.org or contact Christine LeBaroski at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. And then finally, will be the Legislative Committee report. Mr. McBane, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. Election Day is fast approaching. Each seat of our Pennsylvania General Assembly and half of our Commonwealth's 50 state senate seats, including our 12th and 24th local districts, will be on the ballot in just a few weeks. In addition, two candidates looking to serve as our next governor have outlined starkly different educational plans for our students. We ask our fellow North Penn families to be sure that they see and understand what each candidate stands for and make a plan to vote on or before Tuesday, November 8th. Polls will open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. Applications for mail-in ballots or to vote absentee can be completed online until 5:00 PM on November 1st. And information about where to vote and how to vote in person can be found at moncopa.org. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. All right. Next up will be our Solicitors Report. Mr. Summers, please.
Thank you, Madam President. My report tonight is to announce that the board did meet in an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing a matter of litigation, which is doctored in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania as Bennett versus North Penn School District, and to discuss a confidential personnel matter involving a professional employee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Moving on, next we have the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Bauer, please.
Thank you, President Stoll. Good evening, everyone. First, we have the Consent Agenda Items, namely adoption of policies, repeal of policies, adoption of policies for a first read, a notice of intent to repeal, student travel, contracts, gifts to the district, approval to advertise RFP and bids, student agreements, student agreements and hearing waivers, alternative placements, acceptance of Dollar General Literacy Foundation Grant in the amount of $3,000, acceptance of propane bus grant, and finally, medical director dental examiners for the 22, 23 school year. I recommend approval of the consent items.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Rush, seconded by Dr. G. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I recommend the approval of the Personnel Items as per the attached.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I now recommend the approval of a settlement agreement and general release between the North Penn School District and Ashley B. Bennett, a copy of which is on file in the office of the Chief Financial Officer.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. G, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, if I may, with that vote, I'd like to make the following statement. The North Penn School District and Ms. Ashley B. Bennett hereby announce that the lawsuit in the matter of Bennett versus North Penn School District et al. and a related unemployment compensation dispute are now resolved. It is Ms. Bennett's intention to return to a career of working to support students with disabilities and their families. She is pleased that this matter is now concluded and appreciative of the support of her family and friends during this difficult time. The district acknowledges and reiterates the principles embodied in Board Policies 320 and 321 that employees have a right as citizens in a democratic society to speak out on issues of public concern and to engage in political activity. The rights of students, employees, and community members to disagree on critical issues will always be protected, consistent with the parameters and obligations set forth within the First Amendment of the Federal Constitution. The district remains committed to its efforts to develop a community that values and adapts to diversity, and it will continue to strive to acknowledge, respect, understand, and celebrate the dynamics of racial and cultural differences. The district also affirms that it is committed to developing and protecting diversity of opinion as a fundamental value necessary to the development of critical thinking, and it therefore will seek to engage in productive, meaningful conversations and promote civility. In accordance with the terms of the settlement, the parties will have no further comment on this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Okay, next, I recommend the approval of Change Order 25 to Low Bar Incorporated in the amount of $0 for miscellaneous changes during construction by having a contractual change made to apply the unit cost allowance 1B to this change order. I also recommend the approval of Change Order 5 to Cedar Electric Incorporated in the amount of $0 for miscellaneous changes during construction by having contractual change made to apply the unit cost allowance 3 to this change order. And finally, I recommend the approval of Deduct Change Order 4 to Newber Environmental Incorporated in the amount of $10,150 for services included in the contract that were not required.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motioned by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Dr. G. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I recommend the approval to proceed with the development and design of the NAP Elementary Masonry Cleaning, Ceiling, and Restoration Project.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the approval of the View Sonic Interactive Display Equipment Bid in the amount of $467,562.61, as per the attached bid tabulation.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. G and seconded by Mrs. Wesley. Can I have, are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, I recommend the adoption of the attached resolution regarding a capital reserve fund transfer for the 21, 22 fiscal year, thereby transferring $2 million in general funds to the capital reserve fund.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McBane and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, I recommend approval of the attached resolution regarding the disposition of the fund balance, thereby committing $6,300,000 in additional funds for the purpose of meeting future capital... in additional funds for the purpose of meeting future capital project needs and changing the existing commitment of $16,806,523 in fund balance for future piecers funding mandates to a commitment for meeting future capital project needs, effective June 30th, 2022.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McBain, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions?
I would just note, there's a very detailed presentation and rationale provided by Mr. Skrocky at this month's finance meeting for anyone interested in these transfers.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. So there's a motion on the floor. If there's no further comment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the approval of the attached engagement letter with PFM to serve as the District's Municipal Financial Advisor.
Motion by Mr. Rush. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wesley. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, I recommend the approval of the attached resolution requiring the District's tax collectors to waive certain charges for the late payment of real estate taxes on property that was recently transferred when the taxpayer has not timely received a tax notice in accordance with Act 57 of 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rush and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. And just a comment, timely means within a year, right, Mr. Skrocky?
That's correct. Application needs to be made by, within a year.
It's one year, okay. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that is it for the Superintendent's Report, President Stoll.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Next up will be our Treasurers Report. Mr. Skrocky, please.
Thank you, President Stoll. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Thanks for attending tonight. Just a few brief updates tonight. First, for our property owners in North Penn School District, a reminder that the end of the base period is coming up at the end of October, October 31st. If real estate taxes are not paid by this date, a 5% penalty will apply. Also, audit update, our local audit is now nearly complete. We are not aware of any findings or weaknesses. A presentation of the draft report will be made at the November 9 Finance Committee Meeting. That's typically a must-see meeting, so I encourage everyone in the audience to attend that meeting as well. The Capital Reserve Transfer and Committed Fund Balance Changes that were made tonight, approved by the Board tonight, will be reflected in the 2122 audited financial statement. So thank you for passage of those resolutions. In terms of our Treasurers Report, this is the report for the month of September 2022. Our cash receipts in September totaled $43.99 million. Our disbursements for the month totaled $34.5 million, leaving us with a cash balance at the end of the month of $216.6 million. And that is up approximately $14 million from the same period last year. President Stoll, I ask for approval of the Treasurers Report.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mr. McBain. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item for approval would be the ratification of invoices for the month of September, and they totaled $38,766,529.37.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mr. McBain. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, for informational purposes, we do have all of our financial reports for the month of September posted in Board Docs, and we also get into more detail about the reports during the Finance Committee Meeting. I'll just reiterate that so far this fiscal year, four months into the fiscal year, we are ahead of schedule in revenues and we are spending less than budget.
Thank you, Mr. Skrocky. Okay, next up on the agenda is other business. Is there any other business that anyone would like to discuss this evening?
Well, something fun, I could, President Stoll. So this afternoon, I had a tour of the transportation building at the high school and met with a few folks from the team and learned in detail about the personal relationships that develop between the drivers and the students and the families. And particularly with the special needs students, that some of the drivers request to have the same route so they can stay with the child throughout their education. And a number of the parents asked for the same thing, and I was really moved by these personal relationships. And we don't, maybe other Board members have, but I have not heard very much at our meetings regarding transportation simply because they just do their job and there's not much, you know, chaos that takes place. Although, there is chaos on a snow day. That was made clear. But I want to just send out my appreciation, and I know fellow Board members would chime in for all they do behind the scenes, not specifically educationally related, but the infrastructure. And I really want to look to seeing what we can do to improve that particular environment for them when it's, it makes sense, but to thank them. And hopefully, at some point, at Facilities and Operations, we would have just an update from them and really appreciate what they've done, so, enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley.
Madam President.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. G.
Sorry, Madam President, just two items. I wanted to acknowledge our College and Career Center at the high school. On October 11th, the PA Association for College Admission and Counseling had the college fair at the high school. I know that Mr. Brett plays a big part in making sure that's coordinated. There were probably over 100 colleges. I'm sure you know the exact number. I went with my children. I saw many families there. And it really is just such an asset. I mean, as I was talking to families in other districts that we have that at our high school is huge. I mean, there were colleges from South Carolina, Florida, Texas, as well as our Pennsylvania colleges. So I was just really impressed with how organized it was and wanted to thank both the PA Association for College Admission, and I know Mr. Brett had something to do with it as well, so wanted to thank him. And then also, you know, sometimes when we are looking at Personnel Report, we note someone on there that has been a former teacher or someone that we've known. And today, I noted that Elaine Lowery's name was on there as retiring the Administrative Assistant, or former Administrative Assistant for Director of Facilities. But when I met her, she was this Administrative Assistant at Blair Mill, I'm Blair Mill, that's wrong, Principal, Bridle Path, yes. Bridle Path Elementary, and my kids were in kindergarten. And I wanted to just state, she, I remember that she touched my heart and that she was kind and with my two little kindergarteners when I brought them in. And when I saw her name, I just thought, you know, wow, we're just so lucky to have someone like her that works, that was greeting families and with us in the district and, you know, over 30 years of service in a district. So congratulations to her on her retirement, it's well deserved, and all the other retirements. I know I saw, of course, Mr. Durr and Patricia Walsh as well. So wanted to just note that those two items. So, good things as well.
So, Dr. Bauer, I just want to thank you and your team for the ribbon-cutting event at NAP. It was just such a great way for us to be able to wrap that project up. It was a beautiful evening where we were able to invite the community to see NAP. And we've been able to, through your team and your guidance, been able to tour NAP as the progress has unfolded. But I hadn't been in the building since it had been done, and it was absolutely gorgeous and it was really phenomenal. So, but really, one of the highlights of the evening for me was getting to talk to community members, neighbor, individuals who lived in the neighborhood whose children had gone to NAP and they wanted to see the new building, but more importantly, they wanted to see the teachers. They wanted to see teachers who had touched their children's lives and to see the new space that they were in. So that connection of someone who I think they had said that their child was now 27, but they wanted to be in the building, see their child's classroom and what it looked like and be able to compare and contrast that. So it was a gorgeous event. Thank you to everyone who attended. Thank you to everyone who helped have a hand in that. And just the project, as it's come together, has been, it's been truly phenomenal. And we're looking forward to keeping that same standard of teacher and building engagement in our planning process in making sure that our facilities meet the needs of our students and support teachers and our school personnel in what they do.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. I did have one gentleman come up to me that evening and ask me if any teachers were still there from 1967. I had to inform him, no.
That would be asking a lot. But I will say, Mrs. Lowery from Bridle Path, she was there when my children were there, and my children are much older than your children. So she was at Bridle Path for a very long time. So thank you, Mrs. Wesley, thank you, Dr. G., and thank you, Mrs. Ramich, for highlighting some positive things this evening. Okay, is there anybody else that would make any other business? Okay. All right, then we will move on to our second audience of citizens' time period. The same rules apply as before. Mr. Patchell, go ahead.
Is this microphone on?
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank you for diversifying the location of these meetings. And it's quite, quite a change from what existed before. Okay? My wife and I have lived in this township, and I felt it was incumbent of us to come and speak to you and coming to where I pay a substantial portion of my taxes. And I thank Montgomery Township because the reason we moved here was the day that they built Bridle Path. And at that instance, I knew one of the qualifications for a good house would be to have a rancher because I knew when I'm 90 years old, I doubt I could get to the second floor. So there is a certain amount of planning. Okay? Now, what is important is the next most important thing other than the school and the teachers and the education provide, provided, is the response time by the police, which I believe is probably the most fantastic time. I call up and they're here in five minutes. Five minutes. It's five months in Philadelphia, so I do know that there's a comparison. And I defy any other township to equal that record. All are proper height-to-weight ratios and truly an embrozing figure. And if it does look iffy, two more cars come each way with a vicious dog. And in the criminal circles, I'm sure that they say, avoid Montgomery Township, it won't end well for you. Now, what we're talking about is life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. What the Board represents is nine people, all of the same thinking. Would Congress survive if there was no dialogue? If there, they said, comments and questions? Where would that be? I would say it'd be halfway around the world in a building that held 2,400 people, all wearing dark blue suits, blue ties, and all clapping in unison. I don't think America wants to go that way. You talk about spending cavalierly. Ashley Bennett, for the public to know, this group here put her under interrogation and almost forced her, sign, sign, sign. Yes, they were wrong, and that is why they have this settlement. I would like to see that. There was also a principle in another district, same situation. Suppression of free speech. You shot from the head. This isn't Gunsmoke with Jane Darness. This is a logical thinking and public servants that I, there are people in Lansdale with a heating bill of $4,600. Do you care about them? That little rebate that you give? It's mind candy. Less than $200,000.
Mr. Patchell, your time is up. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment?
Lauren Wilson, Montgomery Township. I just wanted to follow Mr. Bill because I too live here in Montgomery Township, and I'm so glad that you all have brought this School Board meeting here to Montgomery Township. And I'm a proud resident, so similar to Mr. Bill here in Montgomery Township for the past over 10 years. And I'm so glad that I'm able to be here with you all today. I just wanted to give you a thank you in terms of the administration and the Board, in terms of the school year we've been off to. My kids are at Montgomery Elementary. We've had an amazing start to the year. I know we've had a hard three years as a community, and I'm just really excited about where we are and where we continue to go. And I see the change with all the COVID policies in the school, all of the, you know, mandates having been lifted and everything. And I'm just so excited for all that's to come, and I'm just thankful for where we are as a proud member, just like Mr. Bill of Montgomery Township. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
President Stoll, we're having some difficulties with the timer, so I'm keeping it main on the only phone.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Jason Lanier, Lansdale. Wanted to continue where I left off with the politicalization of this Board. It's, it's a good thing that there's a bunch of people from Montgomery Township here because I'm wondering how much money that, that the CAS Award Chest donated to these folks that are sitting here. I don't know if, couldn't even recognize a kid here, but Lauren, Lauren Wilson was certainly, maybe she received money from you folks. Jezzy Ann Talbert. Beth Staub. I don't know if, if Ms. Banford had it or not, or maybe that came from the North Penn Neighbors for Progress, but she's the treasurer for that. So I'm not exactly sure how all the money gets distributed, but I think there's, there is a political advantage for you to becoming a Board Member, Mr. Stoll, and you've used this as an advantage to get, you totally politicized the Board. Ms. Patchell's touched on it. The diversity of thought, you mentioned it in the settlement. Diversity, there is no diversity of thought. In the years I've been coming up here, which has only been a couple, there's been two non-unanimous votes. Two. There's no diversity in thought, only diversity in whatever you want to call diversity. If you don't think differently, you're not doing anything, you're not, you're not improving the situation if everybody thinks the same. Everybody thinking the same is not diversity. And in, and to that end, how much money did CAS's Board, or CAS's Rudd get from the Pennsylvania School Education Association? From my, I looked, I thought it was like $50,000. Which seems odd that now that the Board members are also being funded by the School Board Association. Excuse me, the Education Association. And in that Education Association, I read that they are, they, this year are trying to push through a policy where teachers are talking about transitioning kids to a different sex, but secretly. Don't tell your principals. You roll your eyes. I wonder, has there been any emails gone around in this school district that have said, we are going to have days of celebration, we are going to talk about transitioning, we are going to do anything, but don't tell the parents? Anything like that? Anything like that happen? Because this, I'm asking you because I don't, I want you to answer that question. I want you to answer either affirmatively or negatively. And are you aware of the stats revolving, involving trans and kids? It's not so good. I mean, there are countries that have done this before us, and they've decided to stop. Not because they're being cruel, it's because they realize it leads to suicide at a rate that's 20 times what people who don't suffer from this condition are. So when people get irritated about it, they think you're threatening their children. It's a threat to the children. Kids get old, they, as they go through middle school, everyone knows kids in middle school have issues. Everyone knows that.
Time. Oh, good. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Are there any other residents that would like to speak to you? Okay. So, Mr. Lanier, as you are probably aware, the financial reports for all the political candidates are online at the State Department, and you can download them and you can see where all the money went. Furthermore, it is... Most of the money was spent on Mr. Casa's campaign. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head because it's been a couple years. But the balance is, I think it was less than $25,000 in the balance. And the money has to be distributed to other campaigns if you're not going to use it for yourself. Mr. Casa was not going to run again, and that is why the money was distributed to other campaigns. Okay? So if you want any other information, feel free to download it again on the Montgomery County site and on the state site.
I never ran for the second position. They asked me to volunteer because they've gone to some other people and nobody would take the responsibility. So I stepped up and took the responsibility. And to think I make any money being on a scoreboard or doing this other position, I'll send you my bills, the money that I've donated to these organizations out of my own pocket, and I'll pay you every cent that I've gotten from those organizations. There's no benefit here except for me wanting to better the community.
And I know that we have students who are present. We have students who are watching, and I want... I don't want the takeaway to be that we shouldn't serve, that we shouldn't support our community, that we shouldn't step in and that we shouldn't help. There are a million ways that we can volunteer, that we can give our time. We can give whatever we have. There have been times in my life when I had time, but I didn't have money. There were times when I had money, but I have no time. So there's always a way for us to find a way of finding those connections within our community. Maybe it's a cause that you're committed to. Maybe it's a skill you have that you want to give. But it is so important for all of us to find our path and to find our way to contribute. And so I want to make sure that we are encouraging the community, encouraging our students to find their passion, to find their interest, and to find an avenue to give and contribute. You will... might have people who will look down on you. You might have people who will disagree with your choices or what you have done or might think you should support their cause instead of this cause. But give. Find a way to get involved and to give.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich.
And that is the way solutions... I'm sorry. And that is the way that solutions come amongst our own neighbors. Walk in the shoes of your own neighbors. There could be a radio report. I heard your words in an earlier report earlier today, Mr. Lanier. But I find solutions in our community, and I think that's where we all need to be.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Okay, I would just like to thank Township Supervisors, Mrs. Bamford and Mrs. Staub for letting us use your facility tonight. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't see there, Mrs. Ware. Thank you. Okay.
Special thank you to our Bridle Path students and Mrs. May as well.
Yes. That was lovely of them to come too. All right, so...
Thank you, Dr. Bauer, for bringing students into the meetings. It's really great. We always bring student ideas and student missions and things that are focused on the students, so trying to stay mission-driven and reminding us why we're doing this. I really appreciate that addition to our meetings.
I do want to acknowledge that all the technology being brought over, the equipment, huge lift from our Communications Department and you students. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. So is our next action meeting? I haven't looked that forehead. Is it at the SC or is it...
Hold on. I haven't...
Where are we going?
We need T-shirts with the... Hold on. Put me on the spot.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It is in the community. I know December is not.
Hatfield Township, Dr. Bauer.
Hatfield Township. Thank you, Mr. Skrocky. That's why he's the board secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Skrocky. Okay. All right, then, if there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you.